House Member Dale.
Here.
Eugenio.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Alvarado's absent and Mayor Protem Peckle.
Here. Planning Commission will call?
Bernward.
Here.
Booye.
Here.
Amornas.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
And Hall.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join me for the flag salute? Ms. Harvey, to welcome you aboard, would you please leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public appearances are made. This is a public meeting. If you wish to address the council or commission concerning any item within the council or commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on any presentation of three minutes. Longer presentations are requested to be submitted to the council in writing. Are there any public appearances to be made at tonight? No, thank you. Moving on to B, the workshop study session. Before we commence this, I would like to take just a moment out and deviate from the typical protocol. I'd like to give us a chance to go around and I'd like to know everybody that's in the room tonight. So we've just done roll call here for the council, but I'm going to ask everybody to do it one more time to introduce themselves and we'll go around the dais first because there are some new members on the other side who are just joining the planning commission. And then I would really like to know who's joined us tonight in the audience because your voices are going to be key as well. So if we could start over here.
Craig Eugenio.
James Pepper.
Okay, Darryl Peckle, Mayor Protem. By the way, the mayor, Robert Alvarado, is absent this evening, chairing an ICTC meeting that he couldn't miss.
Jeff Dill.
Deborah Jackson.
Dennis Moreira.
And on the planning commission?
Veronica Harvey. Katie Bernward.
Mark Amornas.
Chris Hall.
And Ian.
Great. And in the audience, if you would just go row by row, if you would please, starting right up here with Ms. Thai.
Hi, I'm getting in with Linda.
Your position in the city, just so they have an understanding.
I'm in.
Thank you.
I'm in. Senior Councilman Baker.
Stan Wyler with House Wyler Landy. We were the.
Patrick Zabrocki.
House Wyler Landy.
Laura, what's your opinion?
Eric Telkis. Farwell's. We get the passing fees.
Go ahead, no, there.
Derek Ramon, how do you need?
Thank you.
Dan.
Stephen Chapman, City of Imperial.
Jackie Wilford, Police Services, City of Imperial.
Max Cattio.
Next.
James Brown, Desert Valley Builders Association.
Thank you. Michelle.
Michelle Hollinger, Victoria Holmes.
Bob Carter, Project Manager, Victoria Holmes.
Thank you.
Ray Robyn, Robin Real Estate.
Thank you.
Russell Robyn, Dallas Destruction, Breon Builders.
Thank you.
K. Day McCullough, Collab of Imperial Valley.
Ms. McCullough.
Mark Grant, Strictly Business Real Estate, now on board of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Leonard Warren, Chief of Police.
Thank you.
Tony Penner, ICDR.
Great.
Mark Gaddis, Chief for Construction.
Glad to see you here. And over here running our telecommunications this evening?
Max Chaffield, Propagated Sergeant, and Bill.
Alex Tocanix, three members on the.
Thank you for indulging me. I think it's nice that we all kind of get to know everybody that's in the room and taking part in a conversation like this. This is something vital to all of our interests. So moving on to item B1, discussion review of the development impact fee report. We have a presentation on this?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the planning commission. My name is Stan Wyler. I'm with House Wyler Landy. We are to prepare the development impact report update. I was originally involved in the first development impact fee program and ordinance that was prepared back in the early 2000s. Since that time, we were hired again in about 2008, 2009, and we prepared an update in 2010, and that got approved back then. So we're here before you this evening to go ahead and give you a presentation on the latest fee report, and we're here to answer all your questions and we'll do the best we can to make sure that you're satisfied at the end. I'll go ahead and turn this over to our senior planner, Patrick Zabrocki. He was the one that was most intimately involved in the preparation of the report.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I'm just going to go through our basic presentation to kind of give a broad overview of the impact fee report, how it was prepared. This is a list right here, kind of the topics that we are, you know, just briefly talk about here. First off, you know, the purpose of the development impact fee report. It really is to provide the necessary details to support what development impact fees the city of Imperial will impose and its identified and for the identified facilities in conformance with the government code. The intent of the report is to ensure that future development in the city of Imperial is conditioned to pay for its fair share of future public facilities. So the connection, there is a connection of the development impact fee report specifically with the service area plan that was also prepared for the city. There are two different documents. The service area plan is kind of the one that goes first, and the development impact fee report comes behind that and uses it quite a bit. So I thought we'd take, we had some questions previously about how that works, so I prepared this slide to kind of describe that connection between the service area plan and the development impact fee report. So the one for the city of Imperial was approved in 2015, and that was utilized to assess the current service demand and future service needs within an agency, the city of Imperial's sphere of influence, and demonstrate that the provisions for the future public facilities are accommodated for, and that sets that up for a 20-year timeframe. The city's development impact fee report that we prepared was structured to reflect the framework information and assessment of the service area plan and address how the city will fund future facility improvements necessary as a result of new development. This connection between the development impact fee report and the service area plan is a necessary one to demonstrate the rational nexus between the public facility improvements, needs, and the impact fee to be paid by future development.
Question before you move on, just so I don't have to go back and forth through pages of this.
Sure.
On your second bullet point that you brought up, when you talk about an agency's sphere of influence, are you confined in that and developing that plan to the city limits of the city or beyond the city limits that may still fall within our sphere?
It is, the service area plan is designed to take into effect what's in the general plan, the sphere of influence that's included in that. So that's kind of where the service area plan has taken its, you know, accommodates for everything that's in that planning area as well. So, and the service area plan, not prepared by us this time around, was, you know, had that as its general parameters. So that was something that, as the development impact fee report was prepared, you know, we are directly connected to where the service area plan went out, and that was the sphere of influence.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to make sure I understand is, does that include, for example, areas of maybe county zoning that fall within our sphere, but they're not necessarily inside our city limits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please move on.
Sure. This is a list of the public facilities that are analyzed by the development impact fee report. It's pretty straightforward, administrative facilities, fire, police, library, parks and rec, and circulation for streets.
Okay.
The assessed costs include, within each facility area, we calculate different fees using the costs that are associated with land acquisition, construction, the soft costs, equipment if necessary, and furnishings if necessary. And those costs were specifically determined through construction industry cost indexing data, so Turner Construction indexing data, and consultation with city staff. We had met with city staff and taken direction about the costs that are included in the fees and the calculations of those fees. I know this is pretty small to see, but we've also got 2010 versus 2019, for your viewing pleasure, I think is on the handouts, not on the screen, and everything's pretty small. And then we also do non-residential, so it's residential, non-residential fees, and we've also included a table to kind of do a side-by-side as best as possible with different cities in the area. Not all fees are calculated the same, so there's some differences and considerations to take care of when you're looking at all the different areas' fees together. So the city council considerations to be determined at a future public hearing can go several different ways, and that's kind of what we're here for, is an informational sort of session to kind of help guide that decision-making process in the future. One of those would be to reject the development impact fee report and just maintain the fee structure as is. Another would be to approve the development impact fee report, and if that's done, approve the development impact fee. It could also be done with minor modifications and with fees at or lower than the amounts that are provided in the report, nothing above. And one of the other options that was asked about last session that we had, the city council does have the ability to approve an increase to the fees gradually over, on a year-over-year basis, up to or lower than the amounts provided, whatever level that the city council determines that they want to take. And that pretty much sums it up, so I guess.
Okay, this is now opened up for other comment. Do you have anything further to add before we hear from anybody else?
Oh, no, I wasn't going to add anything to that, other than we're here to answer questions, and between the two of us, I would hope we can answer your questions.
Okay, I'll start with this one. Let's just go right now with what jumps out to me as being one of the highest disparities between us and, say, our neighboring city of El Centro. While El Centro's raking in the bucks on single-family homes, there's a decent difference in commercial, we can get to that later, but in circulation fees. It's proposed that our circulation fees would look like 1760 per unit, whereas our neighboring city is only doing 316 per unit. Can you tell me the difference, what led to that sort of recommendation?
Well, the fee amount is based on the improvements that are needed for various streets throughout the city of Imperial. So we looked at all the different street segments, and some were half-street improvements that would be funded by the impact fee, others were full-street improvements, and that was kind of all based on the results of the service area plan that was done back in 2015. So what the service area plan does is it identifies future needs as the city continues to develop. And the circulation section here identified all these roadways and the costs for those improvements, and we took that and utilized that in our calculations to come up with the fee amount.
That was an increase of 241% over the 2010 amount?
Yeah.
And the SAP was developed by your group or by our staff?
No, that was actually prepared by the whole group, and then it was approved back in 2015 by the city council.
Interesting.
If I might add, I think some of the biggest changes related to the circulation fees from previous, from the previous development impact fee report was that the streets that were analyzed and assessed under this newer version were more, a lot more, streets than previous. So that was taken at the direction of the city staff as to which streets to, you know, accommodate within this report. I think previously there weren't as many streets, and so that's why I think that there's a bigger number, and that's not to say that, you know, it's set in stone that that is, you know, we have to do all of those streets and assess those, but that, I think, is the biggest difference between what we had previously and what we're looking at today is just what the city is considering in this fee update on an overall basis.
Okay. And I guess the other is, where does the weighting in our admin fee structure, our fire fee structure, our police fee structure? We seem to place a little more weight here on our commercial development than we do on single-family compared to other communities who may go a different direction. What do you have that explains how that, why that occurs?
When you're talking about one impact fee for two different, for two different areas, what goes into the calculations as far as, you know, how much is for the performance standard, you know, what the city's needs are, what the city's future, what they determine that they are wanting to provide for the people and for the city's facilities? That determination is, you know, separate from every jurisdiction. They want, maybe want more, more area to do their work, and how they want to determine who's going to be paying for that as far as commercial or residential is kind of a decision to be made within the structure of what percentage goes towards residential and commercial, and it's kind of a jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction basis, and that's, you know, not done, those are all done in their own separate areas. You know, we don't all knead together and say this is what it should be on a regional basis, but for the city of Imperial, that was a direction that the city staff wants to take.
Okay, thank you. The floor is open at this time, and we'll entertain comments from the community or from the planning on any element of this that's been submitted. Any questions?
So based off your fee increase, is that based off of population projections in Table 3 in your report, or are they going to be from the realistic numbers from the census that's going to come up next year?
If I recall correctly, it's population.
Yeah, and that's all generated right from the service area plan, so that, it's the projections over that 20-year period out into the future, as properties are not only developed within the city limits, but as properties are annexed and.
So pretty much these are from the population projections on the SAP report that comes out, right?
That's correct.
So right here, and it says population for 2020, you're estimated to be about 29,000 in Imperial, and in 2025, about 48,000. And so you're projecting those impacts to be for facilities needed for that amount of population or for what it is right now?
No, it's based on the future population and the impacts created by that population base.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm trying to just gather this all. So the increase for the next five years would be based off a population of 48,000 people projected in 2025 of facilities needed for that?
Yes, that's correct.
Anybody else with comments or questions? I'll direct this to staff. She raised a good question about our projection population growth. What has been our population growth over the last 20 years? 4%. 4% is pretty much our average. We have years where it's gone as low as 2, but generally we've averaged about 4. Okay.
Do you think we should reassess this report after the census of results come out? Because I mean, I don't know, almost 48,000 people in five years doesn't, I don't know if Imperial actually has the room to expand for almost double its population.
Was that your projection? Maybe I'm missing that in there. So you're projecting 48,000 five years from now?
Yeah, Table 3 and page 18 of the development impact fee report, it's the population projections. In 2020, it's 29,476. 2025, it's 48,692.
That seems a little bit of a reach.
Right?
I mean, based on our current trend, yeah.
No, and it's a valid question. This is why the service area plan is updated every five years.
Okay.
Because there are changes in trends for population and growth in the city. So that's why the service area plan is really critical to this whole process, in that it is updated every five years to make sure that, you know, it's accurate. And the development impact fee program is based on that service area plan. And again, that was approved in 2015, so, you know, there has been a lag time for the population and where we are today and where we're going to be in the future. So I would say, I would agree that, you know, there is a chance to update that and look at the new census as it comes out to get a more accurate depiction.
Well, we've seen a growth of roughly 10,000 population in about 21 years, you know, so I would have a hard time seeing us doubling in five. Admitted, our growth rate's high. Jackie?
When I started here 17 years ago, you had 3,200 people in the community.
Right.
You have 20,000.
Yeah, we're at 20,000 now.
So.
So seven, in, how many years ago?
17 years.
So it's 1,000 a year. And 4% is about 760 a year, which equals like 4,000 people in five years.
Are you a mathematician?
Where did they come up with the numbers?
Yeah, that's kind of my curiosity of how the population pulls into these fee impacts. I'm just trying to.
No, it's a very fair question. I'm agreeing with you.
So I signed my slip, does that mean I get to come up there?
Please.
So that's my question. That's the, the main thing that revolves around is the numbers are flawed, because how, if we're saying there's a 4% increase annually, how did we come up with the number of X amount of people going to be here? There's no math that equals, that's like a, that's like a 5,000, you know, people per year almost increase, and we've never done that. So my question is, where did the numbers actually come from to come up with that, with those populations? It wasn't, in 2015, that wasn't the case either, so either those questions weren't asked when they came up with the study, like they're being asked now, and they just ran with it.
Right.
Or it was done incorrectly. You know, I think both of those have happened, you know, and I would argue that, you know, you had made a comment that El Centro's banking it on their single-family. Would be true if they built any single-family.
Well, that's probably why they're not.
You know, I would argue that they had infrastructure problems, and they raised their increase because they don't want any growth.
Right.
You know, they do want the commercial, but they don't want the residential.
Yeah.
And I would also argue that our population is slowly, not at that pace, if we had that pace, we'd already have big box stores jumping in here.
Right.
You know, but the city's doing their part, you know, with their partners to rezone commercial land, so we have the capability of putting that stuff out there. So my point would be, why are we raising it now when we're so close, we're about to finally have some, some commercial land and some commercial people that are trying to come in? My dad, you know, he could tell you best that El Centro, the commercial people went running from El Centro when they raised their fees. That's why some are coming to these other cities, because they can't afford, they can't afford a lot of those fees out there. So I would argue that, you know, if we want to attract the commercial people and we want to get those tax dollars, we should, you know, lean towards maybe not taxing them so much so we can make it lucrative for them to come into our town and do business.
Well, I will tell you that even looking at the proposed fees that we're talking about on the commercial side, we still fall with these recommendations far below, I mean, we're half of El Centro would be, a third of what Colexco would be, a fifth of Raleigh. It's, you know, we would still be far under what our neighboring cities are at in commercial development.
Yep.
What I don't want to see is us, you know, killing our housing industry. That worries me a little bit.
The housing is what's driving it. People are going to come to Imperial no matter what, because we have a great city, but you're really going to limit how many people can afford to buy in Imperial if we keep raising up, raising. We sell entry-level houses right now at our Quell Meadows product, and there's times where people won't qualify for a house over $1,000, and we're talking about raising just the impact fees, not to mention solar they're trying to make us do, and a lot of these other things that are just going to drive the prices to the roof. So, I mean, we're not against increases. You guys have to pay your bills, obviously, you want to be in a city that can actually pay for what it needs to pay for.
Right.
But, you know, it's not really our fault that you guys haven't raised these fees in a long time. That study was done in 2015. I mean, we could have been talking about that now. I don't really think it's fair that you go and say, hey, we haven't increased fees in, you know, 10 years, let's give a, you know, 100% increase or something like that. Because that's what, if you look at some of those like circulation, you're almost tripling the rate.
We're talking business. Where did the word "fair" ever come into play? Okay, let's be honest, okay? There's a lot of, four lot of words we can throw around.
We're also talking about houses, though, and the people that have to live in them. And, you know, you're also tagging that fee onto the apartments, you know, and I'm not going to argue, a lot of them want to argue with circulation.
Circulation seems high.
The thing that I want to understand is that the land that we own, a lot of it, is surrounded by streets that you guys are saying in your report that you're going to build. So my question is, when are you building them? And if the money's not there and I have to build them, am I still getting charged a circulation fee? Or am I paying $2 million or $3 million for a road you guys have in there, am I not going to pay circulation fee until I get to the point where I've got my money back?
Okay. Let's talk about projects of yours, then. Let's just take that for just a second.
So for instance.
Wait a minute. You're building how many homes down in Berriani?
125.
Okay, and they're going to feed onto how many streets that are already in existence?
Three.
Right. What's the condition of those three streets at this time?
Not too bad.
80%? 70% of what the wire should be, 50%?
80% probably.
Except maybe the one on the south?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe that one's a close to 40 or 50?
Yeah.
Okay, so obviously we need to build up enough of a reserve to be able to make those road improvements, too. And that's, and that's where these fee impacts come in. You're going to pay for the streets you're going to put in. That's expected.
Not for the report that they just made. Not for the report that they just made. They delineate and say specific streets that they're putting in there. I could go get the report and read it to you, but they say, we're charging these fees so we can build these specific streets, and those are streets that we're negotiating with the city to build right now, you know?
You're going to put houses on, you're going to put streets in front of the houses you're building, yes?
No, the main artillery ones, like, you could go on that thing, and from 86 to the Burshery, it says that you guys are going to build Ralph Road.
Right, okay, that's what I'm talking about. Those are the, that's where these fees come in, to pay for that.
But what I'm saying is that they're asking us to pay for it right now. They're asking us to pay those fees and then go install the road.
Okay, so I guess I need to hear from staff about what's going on with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So that's my biggest concern, is that, you know, we're looking at this and we're trying to understand it. Like, okay, the fees are being raised, but what are they for? Okay, they're for these roads, but you're asking us to pay for these roads, so does that mean we don't have to pay the fee?
It's a good question.
You know, so, and then we were talking back there, that's fine, if you guys want to do this, do like some sort of agreement where we don't have to pay that circulation fee if we're going to be installing the main artillery roads for, that are on that delineated list of roads that are going to be created by that fee, you know? And I'm going to argue that's fine, I just don't want to pay into the circulation and then also pay for the road.
Be double-billed.
That sentence is supposed to be paid by that, is probably the main understanding that we want to get to.
Thank you, appreciate that. Go ahead.
I guess I should have asked you, if you were going to ask me a question, to answer his question. The gentleman here brought this up when we had our workshop before, and I suggested he speak with staff just to make sure that he's not doing improvements that are also going to be funded by the development impact fee program. Because the development impact fee program is not, and the Mitigation Fee Act, you're not allowed to do that. It's kind of a double-dipping. So if a developer is going to be installing streets or, you know, improving parks or putting parks in that are identified in the impact fee report, he gets a credit against his fees.
Okay.
That's how it's, that's how the law is set up, that's how the ordinance.
Mr. Robyn, does that address your question?
Very much so, we just haven't heard that answered as of yet, you know?
Okay, that's why we're here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And then, so Mr. Robyn, if you could, if I could trouble you for just a second, please. So with that in mind, would you also agree that there's still going to be a need for us to have some set aside for some of those other roads that maybe aren't identified?
Well, yes, but what you have to understand is that, like, in that warning star, you know, we're going to build all of our interior streets on our own.
Sure.
And now we're going to build all the outside streets, so.
If that's, if that's what you're going to do, then yeah, you set aside the other, okay.
Yeah, so like in, in that specific project, I mean, like, if you guys are charging us over here where all the roads are already done and all that, then, I mean, so be it, like, you know, what are we going to argue about that?
No, but.
But you're satisfied with his explanation of how that works? Yeah, so if we go in and build Ralph Road and spend $3 million, then we wouldn't have to pay that portion of the fee until we, you know, got past that amount, I guess is what I'm hearing. It's like a credit.
What's that?
That's what it sounds like to me, like, if he spends the $3 million, he's got a $3 million credit, so the impact fees won't kick in until they've exceeded.
If they go beyond that.
So if I owe over $3 million, then I would have to start. If I owe over $3 million, then I would have to start paying...
Paying the fees.
The fair share.
Paying the difference.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Thoughts?
Reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all we're looking for.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Robyn. Okay, sir. And Mr. Gaddis, I saw you starting to get up, so I won't forget you. Oh, he's going to speak for you? All right.
Frankly, my name's James Brown, Eric, and does a values builders association. I felt that I slipped. First off, the data that came, went into that SAP plan, those numbers came from SCAG. And in the last eight years, not one single projection number from SCAG has been correct for the Eastern Riverside County or Imperial County.
Shocking.
By tens of thousands of people.
Yeah, shocking.
So having anything built on that, nothing going forward is going to be accurate or near to correct, and you know that by the population today.
Right.
Referencing streets just for circulation, just for a second, the development impact fees are not allowed to be used for streets that already exist and need to be rehabbed. It's strictly for the expansion of those existing streets to mitigate for additional traffic for a growing population. So that's the purpose. And with his project, it all depends upon what, what circumstances are with that project and which arterial streets that it abuts. So that's going to be a determination between your consultant and your planning department. That's, that's always a case-by-case basis, so to be perfectly fair, I want to make sure that's known. I've got one primary issue here.
Okay.
The study's based on SAP, which is already proven bad data. Also includes a sphere of influence. The mitigation fee act is, the city's, is a legislation that gives the authority to a city to mitigate for impacts of a growing population. And that, there has to be a nexus between the impact and the infrastructure that's impacted and how many people are coming in. So there's, there's a connection there. And the study is supposed to develop what that cost is, essentially per door, per square foot, when it's commercial. But this includes, the city can only charge a fee or create infrastructure within its city limits. It can't build anything outside its city limits. It doesn't have that authority. And with the city, we'd like that area zoned in the county. The county may have other uses for it in the meantime. So until that happens, the city has no authority to build it. You can plan all you want for the sphere of influence, and the SAP is a good idea, but it's a planning document. You can't base a fee on something you can't build. There is no nexus. And under that, and what we're talking about, it's a constitutional policy, it's a constitutional act, Article 11, Section 7, that gives you the authority to police your, within your city limits, to provide whatever services, protections, and so on, so forth. Going beyond that city limits impedes another jurisdiction's constitutional rights. So based on that, this study doesn't hold water. You can't charge one fee based on this study, because it includes impacts for a population beyond the city limits and projects beyond the city limits. So as soon as you have a project listed there for something that's beyond the city limits, and you charge a fee based on that to somebody who's within the city limits, not only you violate the mitigation fee act, it's actually a Prop 26 violation.
It's a pretty definitive statement.
Yes.
On what legal basis are you making it? Where's your legal documentation to back for that? Where's your background?
My background is, I've been doing mitigation fee act reviews for 15 years.
Right.
I consult with Walter K. McNeil, who is a known litigator for mitigation fee act and Prop 26 issues throughout, throughout the state of California. He is identified in the VIA Tulare Kings County versus Lamore case, which is his latest appellate decision. He used to work for Barrett America, was contracted with Barrett America for several different case laws regarding the mitigation fee act. And I happen to be the author of the last mitigation fee act amendment of 66023 that Senator Jeff Stone got passed and implemented January 1st.
But your statement that if we went forward with this, we'd be in violation of the law...
It is.
Do you have court documentation, or is there a court decision that you can cite that backs that up? I don't want us to be in violation of the law.
Not specifically, but your attorney knows.
Okay, then now, come to my attorney. Are we aware of any court decision that substantiates the fact that if we moved on this, on this plan, based on the SAP, we'd be in violation of the law?
I can't speak specifically to this plan.
Okay.
But as a general proposition, I think Mr. Brown, you're is correct.
Okay.
In terms of how, what area you can look at in determining costs associated with the impacts of any given development.
Right.
So...
So in other words, we shouldn't be looking at tacking on road improvement fees to county land with, that falls within our sphere. That doesn't apply, and I can agree with that idea. So you would say that's the law?
I think that's right.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I, please don't take it as a discourtesy, I just wanted to know where it's coming from.
I appreciate that.
A lot of people say things without ever knowing where they come from.
And I, of course, I'm your attorney, but I've been reading this stuff for 15 years.
Works. So what would be your, what would be your solution to this problem?
My solution would be to actually update your SAP or have a secondary plan. Because SAP, as far as showing your needs... It's something that you want to have, especially as you do annexations. You want to know which, you have a plan as you annex, annex something. So as you go through the LAFCO process, you need to know this stuff. So it's not without merit. It does have value. However, for the mitigation fee act, for things that are currently within your city limits, you have, have to pull back. The simplest is try to remove the number of projects and the cost of those projects from the development impact fee study, reduce the inhabitants that will be possibly planned for the city. That's the easiest, but then it's hard to do that going back, because that's not the full picture. So my general thinking would be to have a completely separate plan for within the city limits for what you need.
Interesting. Because what you're describing about pulling out the projects that would fall, you know, within our sphere but outside our city limits, makes sense to me. You know, go through and look at the list of roads that were listed and see how many of those actually fall within city limits versus those that aren't. I can, I can agree with that.
That's the easiest part, but then you also have other facilities within the city that may not need to be enhanced or expanded, such as the library. If you don't have the sphere of influence aspect within the state, you don't need additional library space based on your design standards, your current level of service.
You're going to have a hard time selling me on the fact that we don't need to charge somebody $86 to improve the city library.
And...
I'm just going to tell you now...
$86 is not a lot.
Kids deserve $86 per thousand square foot, no matter what. But, okay.
With me, it's not about the fee. I don't, that's somebody else's.
I, I get that, but it does come down to that sort of thing, too.
Oh.
So, but I get your point. I get your point.
As an economic development driver, the end is what drives everything, ladies, gentlemen, and ladies, that actually builds stuff within your city, that are trying to prepare, and your staff, and you as elected and as appointed, are trying to figure out how to best appoint the city for quality of life issues and the basic needs and beyond. But, and it does come down to dollars and cents. My aspect of this is always, what is correct first, what is fair, equitable first, dollars and cents, then you look at the economic drivers.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment with respect to numbers.
Yes.
I, I heard that we get numbers from SCAG.
Okay.
And, and we just went through the process of getting our housing element approved by the state planning agency. One of your, one of, there's a neighboring city down here who looked at the numbers and said, that's impossible. Westmoreland isn't going to be whatever it was.
Right.
And the fell on deaf ears. And so as a consequence of that, they're having trouble getting their housing element approved, which is also tying up various grants that they were hoping to get to improve their wastewater system. So it's all kind of linked together. We can sit here and theorize about how we can tweak this, or we should go back and do that, but with, once, if you start playing with some of those numbers, I wonder what's going to happen, what dominoes could fall based on the state's involvement in all of this.
You know, but it occurs to me that a couple of meetings back, we actually asked our staff to bring us data on costs for, what it would look like to try and go out and bond versus a loan versus whatever, to provide for new emergency services building in City Hall. And in doing so, staff came back with some pretty interesting projections about growth. Because we were talking about, do we build for a city of 25,000 or a city of 45,000? And how far down the road would that be? And do you remember that conversation? So there were some numbers there that didn't match up with numbers, the population growth that SCAG's thrown out. You know, I think the five-year projection for our city was 25,000, not 45. So the staff worked with, working with the 4%, 2%, 4%, 2%, which has tended to be our fluctuation in population growth over the last 20 years since I've lived here. You know, we tend to run in that cycle, outpacing everybody else in the county. I mean, there's a reason why we're going to surpass Brawley before, you know, within another 10 or 20 years, you know, we'll pass them. But the fact is, those numbers were more, more realistic, because they were based on trends. We don't know what trends SCAG used in making their projections. You know, did they pick a banner year and base everything off of that? Did they take the highest of three years and base everything off of that? We don't know. But we know what our staff looks at, looking at our economic progress and our growth progress that way. So that would be some numbers that might be worth looking at, putting in here, although I don't want to put us in trouble with the state, where our housing element was approved when we're moving forward. But I just, I agree that some of these numbers look a little out of, out of balance.
Is there a way that we can go back and reevaluate this development impact fee based on the trends instead of these unrealistic projections? Just being a scientist by trade, bad data is worse than no data. And I think a projection of 48,000 people in five years is really bad data. So, you know, if our city needs to increase their fees, I think they should be realistic. I don't think they should be based on a population of 48,000 in five years.
Think anything's possible. That's why this is a discussion workshop, not an action item.
Yeah.
So we can look at, do we need to go back? And that's part of what we're here for, is to hear are there things here we need to go back and fix? From the consultants, what would it entail if we were to ask you to go back and look at these, maybe with some different numbers?
Well, we would take those numbers, we would run them through the, through the calculations that we have, and a new fee would be, be kind of established.
Okay.
So, I mean, it takes some effort. It's, it's not one of these things where you plug it in here and out it pops on the other end. You've kind of got to watch where this goes, because there are a series of calculations based on the input. So it, it's not where we sit here and we can put it in and hand you a number in 15 minutes. It does take a little bit of time. It's doable. The beauty about the, the mitigation fee act is, it leaves a lot of the methodology up to the local jurisdiction. You know, the service area itself can be based on anything that the city decides it would like, as long as it's reasonable. So it was determined, you know, quite some time ago, that utilizing the service area plan and the, the results of that service area plan, that was the reasonable approach.
Sure.
Okay, the mitigation fee act does not restrict you, your service area to some certain boundary.
Okay.
It, it's placed, based on, it has to be reasonable, and it has to be attainable. And so whenever you're planning for facilities in the future, you know, that planning is usually out on a 20-year horizon, doesn't have to be. It can be any, anything that you so choose.
Right.
But what you can't do is, and Mr. Brownard is correct, you can't be doing improvements out in the, out in the county.
No.
You've got to wait for that area to be annexed, then you do those improvements. But we can plan for it. And I think that's what the service area, that's the whole intent of the service area plan, and then the impact fee program piggybacks off of the results of that service area plan.
Think realistically, one of the things we'd want to look at is, how much of the county have we annexed over the last 20 years? What percent, you know, what acreage have we annexed in? And use that as a baseline to kind of make a projection as to what we anticipate over the next 20.
Oh, oh, sure, and, you know...
Yeah, that sort of thing.
Quite frankly, the service area plan should do that. It'd do it realistically.
But we're hoping, we, but as we're looking at our mitigation fees, that would be something then that we could weigh in with. But at this point, I don't know if we know that's the case. All right.
And just a quick point, Ted. Practically speaking, really what it would take would be to go back and update the service area plan first, get that all squared away, and then everything else would be updated behind it, if you wanted to do, you know, get all the data correct and current. So it would be more of an effort, like Stan was just saying, it's more of an effort than just putting in some numbers and watching where the numbers fall. It would be pretty much redoing the service area plan from the start, and then tailing everything else that goes behind that, so.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
It seems to me we have two big data points coming up next year. If the service area plan is updated every five years, and it's been four years, it'll get updated next year. Plus, we also have the census...
Right.
...which is going to come up. So it sounds like we really have new information that we should probably wait for before we pull the trigger on anything.
That's not a bad idea. You know, I, I can't disagree with that. And that's, again, why we're talking about it. So this is something that has been 10 years in the making. I think that it's realistic to say that we are going to have to raise our fees. I don't think anybody that lives in this city can act and say that we are operating today, we can afford to operate today on the same sort of planning that we were operating on 10 years ago. But I think if we're going to do it right, we do it right. And so I would say to the developers, anticipate increases, you just may not get them all. Is there, I've just been heading sheets for B1, I've got some more people I can call up, but go ahead.
Mark Gaddis. So I want to touch on what Ray mentioned. So one of the questions that was written, submitted in writing from our previous meeting was the triple header that's approaching the developers is your impact fees, the IAB impact fees, and the...
The school?
Regulation 2024, Title 24 is coming down the pipe. Title 24s that are going to hit for new homes are going to be solar panels on all new homes and other things, expected to be a $15,000 hit for houses. So new homes are, are really going to take a big, big hit, these new homes. Now, Ray mentioned that it's, some people, you know, it's $1,000 hit and miss. We're in the USDA market for USDA low-income home buyers, you know, we're building in the Farmington subdivision on the east side of P Street, H Street. A lot of our customers, we have to tell them to go pay off a $500 credit card and come back in a month and then we qualify them, and then they get a house. That's how tight it is. So when you do want to implement these fees, you need to do it incrementally so we can help increase our prices incrementally.
Yeah.
Right. Now, when the time comes to implement, I spoke to the, to the city building officials already about this and put this point in their head, I want to put it in Jeff's head, in your heads. When it comes time to implement this new Title 24 policy coming down from Sacramento, which makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So we build an 1,150 square foot home. The average summertime, summertime power bill for June, July, and August was $88 a month for that house. How is the $15,000 power grid ever going to pay itself back? So why don't we just adopt our own energy efficiency program? Other cities ignore laws, they ignore city laws, they ignore state laws, they ignore federal laws. Why don't we?
Because we can't afford all the attorneys they can hire to fight them in court.
Oh, okay. We're going to have that discussion at a later date. Just keep in mind, keep in mind, the builders have a triple header coming. Other people in the audience can articulate that better than I. But whatever you implement, you have to implement it in increments so we can absorb it and help our customers absorb it.
I don't think any of us want to have to pay an overcharged bill all at once. We'd rather spread it out. I totally understand that. Thank you. You're next on my
I anticipate.
You're right there, right on the top of the stack.
Kate, from Colab. I appreciate this approach. I don't think my developer members are opposed to an increase based on realistic data. I think they would also like to see incremental plan that increases so that they can go through and do their planning. But to Mark's issue about Title 24, announced today, the SMUD, the Sacramento Municipality Utility District, has announced a utility plan that precludes rooftop dwellers. So they will let them run the gauntlet with it, legal issues, whatever.
Let them see what they come up with?
And then, I'm a big fan of plagiarism. Got me in college. Do you like to take back
The administrator in me, really, the English teacher here doesn't want to hear that either, so.
Yeah, well, it wasn't the English classes, it was, it was a fabulous term paper. I checked all the books out of the library for a long time, the original cut and paste. However, I think if, one of the things that IID has done this increase, what we were successful in doing was getting a grandfather for development in work for three years. Okay? And then staged increases so the guys knew what they were going to be and they could do their planning. If they chose not to be in IID's district and move somewhere in Riverside County, they had that choice. They can't go everywhere in Riverside County. But to do development elsewhere, they know what it means, what's going on. And we did it based upon where they needed to be and then staged with a cost of living increase on top of that.
So are you saying IID actually did something right in that case?
It took, yeah, but they didn't do it by themselves.
Well, I've always prided us on being a little bit smarter than they are, so hopefully we'll do it right too.
I want to say this, that's not hard to do. But we had, what we did in the process is sit down with them, go through, look at the numbers. They were, we were confident that most of their numbers were correct, not 100%. But we understood where they needed to go. And then over, we did lots of individual meetings with them, with their finance department and energy, and walked through the process so that when they actually took it to the board, they could say, "We, we vetted this and we're deal," so it went through fairly smoothly.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks.
Ms. Hollinger, you are down as wanting to comment.
Actually, I think everybody has said pretty much what I was going to say.
Terrific. I see AJ down here, but I didn't see AJ out there.
I also agree.
There you are. Couldn't see you. Thank you. I have Russell Robin down here. Anything more you wanted to add? I'm not going to call your son again, but you have
I would get to talk at home, so I got
You've got to come out here and get the word in edgewise, I feel you.
Russell Robin, Douglas Construction. And in the last meeting we had with the consultants and all that, I wore my commercial hat more than anything. It's a concern for me as a commercial builder, a commercial developer, that you're going to raise the fee at all because we have a hard enough time attracting business into City of Imperial as it is. So, and I, I think Kate was telling me it was like 49% increase. That's, I mean, you've got to look at it this way. El Centro attracts commercials regardless of their fees because they already have it. It's everywhere and commercial goes to where commercial's at, especially retail. They want to be where the traffic's at, they want to be, you know, where the people are at. So we have to do that here. And in order to do that, we're going to have to track some, something that's, that's big and is going to develop. And we are trying to do that out there on, on the Barioni property now. Othon and us, we're working on taking an old school site, turn it into commercial. So, and that's going to go before your guys are bored here pretty soon, so. Fees are always a problem, you know, no matter what we do, we're always, you know, we put them on budgets for people and they always look at them and say, "Why are these so much?" And I said, "You want roads, you want water, you want sewer, you want all these things. You want, you know, police to come out and get the burglar when he's doing that. You want the fire put out, all that, that it's going to cost." The City of Imperial has got the best fees, as far as I can tell, by far, as you were saying.
Thank you.
So that's a selling point. That's a selling point. And it's still really, I mean, it's still a tough sell, right? To get a retail establishment here, because we haven't really got any place to put them right now. So, once we get one, slam a fee on them, it's going to be just that much harder. So, and I know you guys have signs up and trying to get people to come down and plant themselves in some of these spots. Don't hamstring yourself with a huge fee increase. Incremental, again, incremental is the key to this whole thing. If you're going to do 49%, which I, I don't quote, I mean, don't, don't go look at it and do the math because it might be less than that.
I'm not thinking.
It's, 49% is a big jump. Think about this, even though Valory Foods is technically not a commercial building, it's just a big warehouse. It's 145,000 square feet, and if you do a 49% increase in the traffic on 100, that's a lot of money. It adds up fast. So if, if the City of Imperial develops industrial area, I don't, I don't see anything about it in industrial land stuff. But if commercial, I guess, would be industrial also?
Commercial and industrial fees are actually the same.
So be careful with that. Incremental is, I think, the key word of this discussion because that lets everybody gradually
Can I tell you the one thing that'll make it easier for us as we go forward? Is if we can agree to make incremental changes in an amount that doesn't bury us or bury anybody else, we also need developers to quit coming in and asking us to waive fees. Like, because I know El Centro will. I know if you go in and you beg them, we know developers that have gone there and said to them, "Well, it's too much." And they'll say, "Okay, we won't charge you this." Well, that's fine, but that's unethical. That's the whole point of having a fee structure, it's an ethical way of doing business, an honest way of doing business. We want to do business with honest people. And I expect our staff to be honest and ethical about it, and I hope our business people that are coming in will be too. And so far, I have no reason to think otherwise. But I do know that there are developers that have operated in this city and in El Centro that will always come in wanting us to waive fees for them and cut them deals. And that's not fair to my staff, to the city staff. They, Othon shouldn't have to sit there and look at somebody across the desk and say, "No, I'm sorry, I can't give you that deal," and have that person get belligerent in their face. So if Colab and other groups want to help be supportive, if they want to help be supportive of industrial growth and commercial growth in our city, like they're saying, and we really hope they will be, partners, there's got to be some self-policing going on there too. And we can certainly respond to you positively.
I wish I could tell you that I'm in their boardrooms and all that stuff, talking to them, but I'm not. So I can only speak for us. I have had some customers who were very pushy. You know, I'm not going to kick them out the door, Darryl.
I get you, but we're not going to throw, we're not going to throw up the vault either.
Sometimes I tell you what the philosophy is, if you don't ask, you'll never know. So, I mean, if they come ask and you guys say no, and they get a little upset, they always seem to come back, don't they?
They usually do.
Darryl.
Or they go build a restaurant.
A good point though is, we've done incremental fees in the past.
We have, we have no problem.
Especially for our residents on water rates.
Yes, it's a good way of approaching.
And again, we are, our hands are tied with the state with the things that they keep doing. I mean, I can't believe how stupid supposedly intelligent people are. But I get where you're coming from. I mean, I'm business and, and it seems like every time I turn around, there's another regulation. And it costs money to do that. And whatever we've got to come up with that's a balance for our, our community, the developers, the council, so we can pay the bills and make sure everything works, that's where we need to be at. And if that's an increment, I'm all for that. I think that's the right thing to do.
I think if you did it yearly, if you're going to have a yearly increase out, or maybe more than, you know, maybe five years, at least you could publish that to all of us so we understand what's coming and we could plan for it.
Exactly. Put it in the formulation.
Not right at the end of the year. Oh, by the way, in three months, or in three, 30 days, it's going up.
No, that's not, you saw, you know, as unpopular as it may have been, you saw what we did with our water and sewer fee increases. We did publish that, those are known in advance, and we're going to stick to that schedule.
Nobody wants to pay more, but we understand, I mean, I don't know, I understand that you have to have some money to do these things. I think we may disagree on how much you need. In fact, I know we would disagree on how much you need. I don't agree with the 48,000 people, I've lived here my whole life, along with Jeff and everybody. Everybody's lived here their whole life. Even in the best of days in Imperial, it wouldn't say it wasn't growing that fast, so. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up, that I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget it, which is a problem with me. Oh, by the way, can I, we don't have a copy of that, the report they were showing.
Staff can provide that, not a problem. Alexis can get that for you.
I've heard a rumor that the state's talking about capping increases for development impact fees and stuff like that for residential.
That's true.
That is true, right? Yeah, so that, that's going to affect what you're
That's going to affect some of what we're doing too, if we wait, if we wait too long.
That goes along with the thing we were in here the other night for, you know, what's going to happen with all residential properties.
The state keeps throwing things down on top of us, just like they do on you. Like you were talking about with the apartments the other day, they're going to take away the right for us to police
You start throwing stuff back at them, you know?
Now, we can always secede, Jeff wants to secede.
That's exactly. Mark and I have talked about this before. It's out of control. But you know what's bad is we have a lot of politicians that just stay muted instead of getting up there and calling them out to what they are and the BS that they keep shoving down people's throats. Now unfortunately, we just kind of go along with it because that's the only recourse we have. I say flip them the finger and move on. You know, it's, it's out of control.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your words. Thank you, sir.
You missed it, Mark, you were in there.
I have, no other sheets on this item. Is there anybody that has anything else new to share on this before we move on? Is there anybody today that wants to make any other comments about the item B1 before we move on? Thank you all very much, that was a great exchange, I appreciate the input and the ideas. We'll move on now to, we'll close the discussion on item B1, move on to item B2, discussion review of the water sewer capacity fee report.
Well, it's good to be back. I liked that, some positive reaction to the water and sewer rates from a while ago.
Resignation, I think is a better term for it, right? For resign to it? Okay.
And, you know, some of that, what we talked about then, you know, plays into what I'm going to talk about. The capital, informing the capacity charges. My name's, for those who don't know, I think everyone saw me last time. Unfortunately, you guys are going to be more similar, because there's some new, few faces, I'm just kind of treating myself. But my name's Eric Kelgason, I'm with Bartle Wells Associates. And we're a municipal finance consulting firm. And we did the water and sewer capacity fees this time. And in the past, we also did the water and sewer rate study. And when this gets going, I'll, I'll go through it. But I'm basically going to talk about, you know, some background objectives for the study, the methodology we use, talk about how we calculated the fees, and then, you know, discussion. So, the capacity fees are one-time fees paid for a new connection or if there's a redevelopment that requires additional capacity, the fee is designed to recover the costs of existing and future facilities that will benefit that capacity. The revenues derived from the fees need to be segregated from operating revenues and used for capital projects. They, they, you know, defer to your attorney, but the general understanding is that they can be used for most capital projects on the water and wastewater side. The objective of our study was to produce fees that were appropriate, legal, and fair, and reflect the current system and the projected growth. The current fee for water is about $2,200, and the current fee for sewer, and this is per equivalent dwelling unit, which is similar to, you know, a single-family home. Or on the water side, we define it as a one-inch connection. And the sewer fee is $1,850. So the criteria we used when we were developing these, these fees were that it recovers the full cost of the infrastructure that's benefiting the new capacity in equitable way. And we use industry standard methodology and we comply with the government code. The main code governing it is 6613, or is the Assembly Bill 1600. And it says that the fee shall not exceed the reasonable cost of providing service versus fees imposed. Meaning that this fee is a, you know, what we're proposing is our calculated maximum fee. So if the council adopts, adopts the study, then that's the maximum. But the council could phase it in if they so choose. And the other, the other point is that, I think we touched on in the last presentation, that the code also doesn't specify a specific methodology. So there are several reasonable industry standard methodologies that are used to calculate fees. And they can, you know, create a range of different outcomes. And so the one we used, we felt was fit with the city's structure and was one that wasn't on the high side on the outcome, and wasn't on the very low, extreme low side on outcome. So we wanted to be kind of fair to both sides and just reasonable. So the approach we use is called the average cost approach. And we determine the cost for the existing assets and the replacement cost of the existing assets. So we inflate the original cost to today's dollars. We then reflect that, you know, they aren't brand new. So we just pull out the depreciation from those values. And that's where we get the cost of the existing assets. And then the, and then we look at the capital plan and the cost of capital projects that are designed to benefit increased, benefit new growth or increased capacity. And we add those to the, to the current assets, and that's kind of how you get the numerator, the revenue requirement of the fee. We then look at how much additional capacity is going to be added to the system and calculate the unit cost by dividing the final system capacity, existing and new capacity, dividing the numerator, the revenue requirement by that future capacity. And the basis for, that we boil everything down to, as I said before, is an equivalent dwelling unit. So how we, this is the water capacity fee calculation and the expanded capital. We, again, we took the capital plan, we worked with staff, and pulled out all the projects that were not related to new growth. And, and then we also, and so it's not the full capital plan, it's just those, those specific projects. And then, so we have the total value, which is 38, or 39 million. And we looked at the capacity in the future, there's going to be an additional 2,600 cubic feet per day. And so you have your total system capacity, then we looked at how, what the average day, average peak day demand is of a single-family home, and we said, "Your system will be able to serve this many dwelling units." And then you take that number divided by the number at the top, the 39 million, and you get the fee. This, this approach is generous where, you know, chances are you might not, you know, you might not get to maximum system capacity. So, you know, just to kind of show where we're being, you know, where we're being reasonable is, you know, we could have gone with a lower number, but we felt that it was fair to both developers and to the city's needs to base it on the actual projected capacity in this case. On the sewer side, we did the same thing. One important thing to note is that this fee doesn't have the cost that, the latest cost for the sewer treatment plant has the original cost, so that's about an $8 million difference. So, you know, just another, you know, it could be higher, it could be lower. But we think where it ended up is reasonable. And we also, again, based it on, you know, the current, current assets, what's related to expansion. And and, you know, the capacity of the system at the build-out, at our projected, the water, or the sewer system's projected build-out to get the fee. And the sewer fee is jumping up quite a bit more than the water fee, but largely that's because you built a brand-new treatment plant, so. We did a little survey showing where you guys fall, and I know it's to do with other cities, and it's not, you know, we're not trying to cherry pick, it was just trying to honestly be fast to pay the city money. But on the water side, it's a very marginal increase, and on the sewer side, it's a bigger increase, but you guys are going to still, you know, be in the ballpark of other cities. And you have a brand-new plant to do. So, with that, I'm open up for questions.
When you're determining EDU, you're basing this on residential use, correct?
Yeah.
So, but this fee, as it currently exists and is being proposed, would apply to both commercial and residential?
Correct. So, on the water side, it's based on a one-inch equivalent meter, and that's also how the fixed charges are based in the water fees. So, you know, it's kind of the flow that can go through a certain diameter pipe, and as it increases, you know, you can take more capacity, and it's not necessarily one-to-one, like a one-inch to a three-inch, it's not times three.
What if you're dealing with a facility, for example, in commercial development, sometimes you'll be adding on something under a commercial property that doesn't require necessarily a new meter?
Then you wouldn't necessarily need to charge them an additional fee. If they already paid for a three-inch meter and the capacity that's associated with a three-inch meter, then they've already bought into that.
And at the same time, if you're dealing with an off, you know, putting in an office, for example, adding a commercial space for office space or for retail, and you're dealing with a restroom for employees, you have a toilet and a sink, that's not going to generate the same sort of water and sewer use as a home with 2.4 residents in it, or 3.4, whatever number we're basing it on. Would you agree?
Well, I think it would depend on the case, but I think when you're.
But if you're looking for a rule of thumb, would you expect the same sort of use from a small business with a single, with a toilet and a sink to be the same as a household with multiple bathrooms and sinks? And washers and dryers, and washers and hot water heaters?
Probably different, but, you know, maybe two people in the office and one or two people in the house, like.
So, is there a way to look at this fee structure, for example, to have it be more reflective of what really the commercial side of this really looks like?
On the, on the, I mean, we could look at other units of service for the water side, absolutely. The reason we use meter size is just because it's straightforward, it's accepted, and it's easy to apply uniformly for the city staff, you know, it's an easier, you're not, you don't have to spend a bunch of time, like, looking at how many fixtures are going to be in the.
I remember when you explained this when we were discussing the original fee increases and everything else, and it made sense, but now I'm looking at some of the, how it's applied, I've had a reason to raise some questions. Anybody else have questions at this point for this presentation? Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to catch up here. So, other than really not understanding much of what you said. Are sewer fees based on water capacity use, or is it based on a separate fee scale?
Your sewer fee.
Whether it's commercial or residential.
That's a great question. Your sewer, the sewer fee is based on winter use, winter water use as a proxy for what is indoor use of a, of a single-family home.
So, it's based on the gallons per, or cubic feet or per day?
Use in the winter.
Regardless of whether it's going into the sewer or not?
Yeah.
So, if it's going onto my lawn or into my swimming pool, I'm still getting charged to go in the sewer even if none of it's going to the sewer.
Well, that's why we also, we looked at only December through February use, and to, as a proxy for, to approximate what's, you know, more likely going to be indoor use.
So, there's three months, what, December to February, is that?
Yes, as far as what we use as a proxy.
So, basically, those three months of the year, the lowest technical use of water is what you're basing the sewer consumption on for the whole year?
Yes, because that's mostly indoor use, whereas as the months change, the water's going, you know, on the lawn, which is not going into the sewer.
Oh, somebody would tell me swimming pool, then.
Or swimming pool.
Yeah.
Does it seem to evaporate out water regardless of the time of year?
Yeah, and, you know.
Okay. All right.
These fees are approximations, you know, nothing's, you know, it's not going to exactly be the same, but it's a reasonable approximation between one person and the other.
A lot of commercial property could use a lot of water in processing something, but not necessarily running it into the sewer, depending on what they're make or making or needing it for.
Right.
Correct. And that's right, the sewer isn't based on meter size, but the water, the water is, because you know what they're taking in, but then what they're putting, what they're, you know what is coming into the building, but you, but it's what goes into, you're exactly right, what goes into the sewer is different.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems like the outflow ought to be based on a number of sewer lines going out of the building, not the number of water lines going into the building.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, no, no, that makes sense, and the sewer is based on, you know, applied based on the definition of the gallons per day, the estimated flow going into the sewer, so it's, I think that's estimated based on the type of business.
Yeah, sewers aren't meters, it's a gas.
Yeah.
It's the best gas.
Yeah, exactly. And then there's a little more work in applying that fee than the water fee.
All right.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks, Mark.
No, those, great questions. Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for the speaker?
I do have a question. So, I know this includes capital and O and M. So, how does this be, I know for any, like, new development or renovation, how does that capital fee differentiate from the rate that we're charging? So, is the capital separate somehow, or, because I know the sewer plan is affected by our fees that we pay or rent, so how?
That's a good question, and the first, the first point is it doesn't reflect any operating costs. So, all operating costs are paid by the rates, yes. And then it pays a portion of capital to kind of reflect that, you know, it's, you know, it shouldn't, the previous rate payer shouldn't have to put the whole bill for, you know, the capital system that's going to benefit future growth, when the future growth comes in, they should basically reimburse them for some of those expenses. And then also, you know, so you're buying into the system, and then there are certain capital expenses that are only being incurred to benefit that future growth, so then those capital expenses are also included.
And how far do you go on the capital?
I think this fee was based on, I think it was, we, we based it on the most current estimate of capital projects, and most of, and like, the capital projects for the water and sewer, like, the new plant that's going to last 70 years or something, so, we based it on build-out, but we only included the 10-year capital plan, and so you're right, we could have used more.
Five years.
Five years, I guess it was five years. I think we assumed the 10-year, 10-year study, five-year capital.
Okay. I'm sorry, could you speak up? We couldn't hear that.
I, I said seven-year study, or five, seven-year study, five-year capital. But I think we did do some assumptions that some, some capital costs would go on for 10 years, and so we included all of those costs.
Some assumptions that certain expenses within the capital would carry on beyond seven years of the study.
Okay.
So, we cut it off at 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let me call up Mr. Brownard. You were asked to speak on this item?
James Brown here again. One of the things he was talking about, we're talking about the sewer costs and stuff, it's not a, it's, you know, you never, as far as sewer, you pump out a gallon of fresh water, you're only expecting maybe a quarter gallon back, and so it's not, it's not a gallon-for-gallon type situation. So, it's a ratio, and what he was discussing was generally the current standard. You pick the day and time or the season in which the largest flow is coming back to the system, and that's what you have to build to. So, and we built, and the capacity of that system designed to a certain level, what that is, is different from every city, and it's not, has pretty much nothing to do specifically with this SAP, because you're building a system, and then as the growth comes in, you watch that until it's to a certain point in time where you say, okay, we need to add more, and this is the basis, and you calculate the costs going forward. So, it's a little bit more simpler. In our June letter to the city and in the last study session, we requested a, basically an audit of what the study is. For our concerns, this is a summary. This is conclusions, this is a basic overview. This has nothing to do about the nuts and bolts, doesn't have the specifics enough to what's currently available, the capacities of all the systems, and they vary depending upon the area of the city and where the growth's going to be, and what you capitalize on with the new growth. As far as the costs are, it looks quite reasonable. But back to how I am and how I review things is, does it actually add up? I don't have anything to add up to make sure that it is fair and reasonable, and I again ask that we be provided with the complete study, which has all the amendments to it, where the growth's going to be, what's the current infrastructure means, the capacities of different applications within the systems, whether it's water or wastewater. Until I have that, I don't have an opinion on the final outcome.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. McColl?
Ms. McColl, still a question, and don't take this as a challenge, but this is a rate increase, and is this subject, as we complete this process and want you guys decide to deal with this, is this subject to a 219?
It's not subject to Proposition 218. There's a separate process associated with it.
Okay. And what would the process be?
Well, you do a study, you have public hearings, and then ultimately the council acts or doesn't.
Okay.
So, it's not, it's not, there's not a protest process.
So, there's no appeal or no protest process?
There could, it could be challenged, I mean, for reasons that Mr. Brownard surmises may be the case, but so there is a challenge process, but it's more to the substance of what the city does, as opposed to pursue. I mean, you know, I'm assuming, well, dot the i's and cross t's on giving proper notice and all of those sorts of things. The challenge would be, did we, did we do it right?
Yeah, and don't take that as if I'm going to rush out and find an attorney, but I just needed to understand the process for this versus the other.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Do we have an explanation of what you have the numbers?
What did that mean?
Yeah, what does all that mean?
219. Oh, well, Proposition 218 was a proposition that was passed by the voters, and basically addresses the manner in which agencies, the process they have to go through to with respect to taxes, assessments, what are considered property-related fees, and things like that. And so, with respect to, for example, water rates and sewer rates, those have been determined by the courts to be property-related fees, and so there's a majority protest process. You go through, you go through your study, you have your public hearing, and at the end of the public hearing, in the case of a water rate increase, the owners of parcels impacted by the rate can submit a written protest. That contrasts that to an assessment, where if you're going to impose an assessment, you have to have a vote that receives a majority, 50% plus one. So, with an assessment, for example, you have to get a 50% plus one affirmative. With Prop 218, property-related fee, it's a, you have to get a 50% plus one protest. If you get that, then you can implement the interest.
As opposed to these fees that don't fall under either.
There's all kinds, there's a lot of voter-enacted laws, some of which are part of the Constitution now, but, so there are various propositions that impact the city's ability to charge. All goes back to Prop 13, right? Back in the 70s, the voters decided that, that's back in, some would call it the good old days, I suppose, the agent, the city, for example, would figure out what it would need to make its budget, and then fiddle with either the, your assessed valuation or the percent, and come up with the money, and the voters decided enough is enough on property taxes. So, then after that came all, cities became creative in terms of how it generates money to conduct its business. And so, in response to those efforts, you have Prop 26, Prop 218, and then the rest.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate that.
How do you determine what's 50% plus one? I mean, that's like the total number of people in the city, or you have a vote, or I mean, how do you get 50% plus one and under a protest? I guess is the point.
Well, okay. With the protest, with the water rate, and with the property-related fee, you determine how many parcels are going to be impacted by the, by the increase.
We'll say 20.
Okay. There's 20, then you have to have an 11, 11 people protesting.
Have to show up here physically and say, no.
Actually fill out a form.
Or fill out a form.
They would fill out a form.
Okay.
And so, and they could submit it, there would be a period of time that the city determines, okay, this is the period of time you could submit a protest. Well, you could do that up until the end of the public hearing.
How about you be able to showing up and pounding on the walls and stuff? It's, because you got to be.
It's the same process we went through when we did the water and sewer rate increase a year and a half ago.
A lot of protests.
Right. But that's exactly the process, we're sort of real, but that was exactly the process that we followed in that case. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, Russell Robin, you were asked to speak on this issue?
Sure.
Never met a mic you didn't like.
It's really about the same, same stuff I wanted to address. It's the general, the environment imperials to build, any, the increases are going to be difficult to swallow. And houses, you know, if you're raising fees up, they're, you know, people can't qualify in commercials, if you raise them up, they go to Alcentro, so just incrementally, if we could do it slowly, digest it in, and, you know, that's, I guess that's the word of the day, incrementally.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this issue at this point?
This kind of goes back to what we were talking about on the roads, and I'd really like to understand the study a little more, because when they were going over, they said they, they made a study to figure out how much it was going to be for water and sewer. So, we have a, you know, I don't know, is that, is that just for, like, cleaning the water, or is it also for infrastructure that goes safe from the water plant, you know, out to a new subdivision?
It's the capacity to deliver water, which is, which means everything. It's the capacity, we're talking about a fee that goes directly towards the city's ability to process the water, deliver the water, everything else.
My question would be, I have two, a project warning, sorry, here, two things. We're, the first phase, we're going to extend an 18-inch water line from the front of the hotel. By the second phase, we're going to have to bring an 18-inch water line about a mile from the water plant out to the deal.
Right.
You know, we're working on, we're going to work on reimbursements agreements with you guys, and, you know, get some reimbursement for some of that line from the actual houses. But my question is, is any portion of that line collected through this water capacity fee?
It does, I don't think it's targeted towards projects that way. It goes into a capacity fund, Jackie, am I right? And the fund is then available, it's what we use, for example, to put in the charcoal filtration system. It's what we used last month to spend $20,000 on ultraviolet lights that have to be replaced twice a year. It's those sorts of things. So, it goes into a fund for that. It's also what we use to buy, to buy the equipment that we need to repair broken lines, et cetera. It goes into all of that.
So, none of it's for new construction whatsoever, like, like, future capacity projects?
Sure, it could be. It absolutely could be used for something like that. It goes to the capacity of the city.
Yeah.
To deliver. And as he was, I think, as I heard him say in the statement, part of it is, as new developments come on, their come on, they're going to require more from the city at some level to get them the water or to process their sewer. So this is, rather than saying everybody else has already paid for this for you, this is your contribution towards the upgrades that are going to be required as we, as we move forward. That's all.
I completely get that. My only question would be, is any of the money collected for the actual water line? Because if we're going to get a reimbursement agreement from, from actual people that are paying to come into the houses, then if, if any of that is collected, that obviously to clean the water and send it somewhere, you know, we have to pay for that portion because we're expanding. But what about the actual infrastructure, the main infrastructure, the arterial lines, if we would say?
Okay. My, this is simply speaking from where I'm sitting, it seems like that's a very narrow question in that, is any of that money going to go to pay for that water line? I don't think so because the money's already there to pay for that water line.
So can I ask the consultant then, is any, in your study, is any portion of the money you're collecting for, for distribution lines?
The, the money that we're collecting in the study is based on the entirety of the current system. So some of that system does include existing distribution or collection lines as well as the sewer. I'd also say that your system is fairly built out, like there's not a lot of additional capacity being added because there isn't enough capacity or just other issues driving the, like the nutrient line thing. So it's a large bit buying into, it's a cost of the system you're buying into. And these systems are all connected, so you know, the water, the water systems are all connected systems, so it's buying into the whole system. And then they're using those funds. So if you're talking about a specific line here...
So there was a 500 homes out here that was going to be supplied by the water plant. Is that, is that, is that line that's going to go out there to supply a part of the impact fee?
It's, the line, how they're going to pay for that is going to be a mix of the fees they collect and great par of capital and if they need to go out for financing, they print that in as well.
So that is part of the...
Sure.
Yeah, they can use, it's their discretion how they use the fees they collect.
So I guess my point is that if we're charging the impact fee which gets passed on to the homeowner and then we're also charging the homeowner a reimbursement fee, they're getting charged twice. There's got to be some portion of that impact fee that's for the actual distribution of the line from what he's saying. So I just worry why, like if we're going to go get, you know, we put all the money for the line, none of that has to come out of, for future use, future distribution, none of that comes out of the pocket of the city because we're paying for it out of our pocket and then getting a reimbursement agreement from the actual consumer, that I worry there's got to be a percentage, like obviously you guys got to clean the water, there's got to be capacity for that, but a portion of what, what that impact fee has to be for the distribution line. So I'm, what I'm saying, if we're going to charge the consumer, they're paying for it in whole, there's got to be some sort of percentage that's for, for, you know, making the capacity and then for the distribution line. I, I don't know how they figure that or what that percentage is, but...
When you say reimbursement fee, this is the fee that you, the builder, is charging the home buyer, yes?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you be able to build a house without water?
Without water?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. So you understand that that's a cost of doing business?
Okay, but back to what you said, if I'm paying you guys to put the water, then you guys should put the line.
Except we're not building the houses there. You are.
Okay.
Again, Mr. Robin, that's a cost of doing business.
No, you guys are charging me for something, you guys, you guys have a fee that you're calculating on how much it's going to cost to get the infrastructure out there and you're charging me so I can build a house, then you're asking me to pay for it.
You're, you're assuming that fee is being used for that purpose. What I, what we've been trying to say is that fee goes towards the total capacity of the city to provide water for all the businesses, all the homes, everything that goes on. Everything, and all of that continues to cost us more. So when, for example, when we have to put in new processes to clean the water because we're getting better, dirtier water from the, from the river that's being delivered to us by IID, that costs us more. So these mitigation fees help build up the fund we can use to pay for the materials we're going to have to invest in to clean that up and get that there.
I understand.
All of that is part of this.
I understand that and I'm not arguing with that, but he's just saying part of the fund is also for the distribution line.
Okay.
So what percentage is for the distribution line and what percentage is for cleaning?
I don't have the number like that, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm, that's what we're going to discuss, that's why I'm asking him.
Thank you, Mr. Robin. I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Is it more of a could be used for distribution line or not would be used for, like a possibility? It's not, it's not existing system. It sounds like what, what is being discussed is a...
A future.
Future project and that project is not included in the capital plan that we base the fee up of.
Right.
So there's a difference between planned capital projects and, and capital projects that are done...
Oh, sorry. My apologies. So I would just reiterate what, what I was saying is, is there are certain, there are planned capital projects to, for the, that benefit the system as a whole and then there are capital projects that benefit a specific development that was not part of the, the plan and those, those projects are not included in the fee. The fee is only recovering costs of planned capital projects. So...
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Are there any other comments on this or questions about this? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close discussion on item B2 and that will move us then to item B3, architectural standards for the SR86 corridor. Is there a presentation on this or is this me?
No.
Okay. So this is partly my fault and so we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but one of the things that's been most successful, I think, in, that I've seen in my tenure both on planning and city, was the effort that went into focusing on what our downtown would look like. The sidewalks, the lighting, the light standards that are there, the architectural standards, the colors that are being used in the buildings, et cetera. So to develop a colonial, a downtown walkable look, there is an overlay that was placed on the planning map for the city that gave us that village overlay, is what it was called, that gave us that look. As we look at the corridors in our city that are going to be ripe for future development, there right now are two major ones, the highway and Ayton Road as it passes through Imperial. And so I've suggested to staff, I think that's why that wound up here as a workshop talk, that one of the things we might want to look at as a city is adopting a community standard of what buildings going into those corridors should look like. So it doesn't become a patchwork quilt of design standards, but becomes a much more uniform, uniform and recognizable look. It gives the city a more visible identity. It gives us something that people can point to and say, oh, that has a nice feel to it. This is the way, this is what I like. I would bring your, I would draw your attention to cities like Palm Desert, Palm Springs, La Quinta, that have done similar sorts of efforts in their marketing area, in their community areas, in their commercial areas, to develop a look that is conducive to promoting a walkable, family-friendly business atmosphere. Compare that to, for example, downtown Calexico on First and Second and Third Street. Oh, Mark Shakes, yeah. Or even, I'm sorry, but even downtown El Centro has suffered sadly because they've not been able to maintain certain standards along the way and there's, and to the detriment of business in those areas. We have a wonderful community downtown. We want to see our highway corridor develop into a strong and marketable area. One of the ways that can be done is to adopt a standard there that would be similar. So I'm just curious to hear what you think. We've seen a couple of projects come into town over the last four or five years that stand out because they break the aesthetic, if you will, and because there is no, there is no zoning overlay for that to designate, these are the right, these are the template of colors we want you to use. So they use a bright blue or now a purple and a yellow and a green and white and a combination of those. Do we want to do this as a community? Have this standard look and feel? Or do we want to continue to allow any business person that wants to come in to build anything they want to build, be able to pluck a building out of Toontown and stick it down on the side of the highway?
You're commenting about it.
I'm not commenting about anything.
Just saying.
Just saying. So it's all wide open for discussion and thoughts. Just, just those were my points for ever having brought this forward to staff.
I think my only concern is possibly if we get some type of a big box store or something that has a specific look already, how would that...
What's your vision for it integrating into our building plan?
We, we talked about that before when I was driving through, through Sedona this summer and there's a McDonald's right on the main corridor and their arches were turquoise. So their, their standard is like browns, beiges, turquoise and even, even stores coming in have to conform to that, that standard.
We can also take a look at other communities that have had big box stores come in and they simply apply, adhere to a template of colors. It doesn't necessarily mean the same architectural structure. I'm not saying I want to see everybody have porticoes and arches. I'm saying that it would be nice to have a template of colors that fits our community that we adopt as our standard, look kind of, you know, modeled on what we've done with our town logo and set, et cetera, you know, something along those lines.
And also in, in Logan Heights in San Diego, there's a Walmart that they, it's one of those neighborhood Walmarts, they make neighborhood targets. There's another one, there's a Target in South Park, San Diego, that's been modified. It's a small version, it's a neighborhood version. So these big box stores are coming in to establish communities with, and they're coinciding with their preferred aesthetics. So we could, I've seen it done.
Okay. Yeah. There are ways, the Walmart in Yuma down on the river, down on the bottom end of town is done in browns, not blues, you know, that kind of thing. And even if you think about Walmart when it went up in Brawley, you know, they adopted a different aesthetic for going in there near the hospital than they might have put in, for example, when they were building here in El Centro. I would even think of Jack in the Box in Long Beach, or not Long Beach, I'm sorry, La Jolla, which has no drive-through, you know, because that was something in their community standards. There's a lot of flexibility in there, but is this something we want to do?
I just worry about it, Imperial already seems like it has a hard time getting commercial and industry to come in and anything else, I would veer them away, would be my only concern. I think it's good to have everything uniform so you don't have these Toontown, you know, buildings in there, but the thing is you already have it, so you're going to, it's already going to stand out regardless.
Right. It's just a matter of, do we want to, so that's why I'm asking, is it worth our while to look at adopting a standard along the corridor to prevent more like that coming along, to try and develop more standardized look? You know, maybe then encouraging that property on or others, others who may be on there like with the blue gas station, to maybe come in to, you know, to conform with that down the road.
You're talking about the 86th corridor, right?
Yes.
So we're not talking about Peachtree?
No, we're talking about the 86th corridor.
Or a commercial project you go out there and not have to worry about.
It's not a major community, major community thoroughfare. We're looking at where we really want to develop. So think in terms of the businesses that could develop from threshold all the way through that corridor as we go through and we improve the highway, because you got to remember, we're looking 10, 20 years down the road. What's that corridor going to look like? How are we going to landscape that out? What appearance do we want to have there? We've had conversations about desert scapeing that whole corridor, about putting in brick palisters and wrought iron fencing, about putting in the same ornamental iron, iron light work in a walking path along the front of the airport, all the way down through town that we have in downtown Imperial. So what kind of aesthetics do we want to ask of businesses that come in and build in a vacant lot across from Wall Road, for example, or along an industrial park, highway front edge? Or as we come further down, if somebody wants to take over an old gas station, tear it down and build something on that pie of property there at the entrance to this traditional Imperial? You know, do we want to have a standard look going in there that says you're in Imperial and it has this feel to it?
You should have it anyway. It should be done. I don't, I don't...
As long as it's this, as long as it's all the cost effective and we can get rid of the tank traps around Highway 86. So we're trying to stop the panthers out there.
Yeah, well...
I don't mind, I don't mind Toontown, I just don't want Florissant Greenhouse or something like that. I mean, I think it's, it's wise to have a plan anyway.
Right.
So that's kind of a no-brainer.
And I think businesses might be more prone to establish a business in an, in an area that, that has standards, right? I mean, if, if...
They have a better idea of what's going in next door to them.
Right.
Take it to staff or still work on it.
As long as the standard's outrageously expensive, everybody can afford to do it. In the planning stages, I mean, you're talking about facade walls, basically the front, it's not really ideal to change what it looks like on a cause, as long as everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. I mean, it has to be painted a certain color anyway, I don't think that would deter anyone.
That's right.
And it's not even one color, it's a palette of, you know, it's associated colors and similar colors.
Yeah, but if you look at places like Phoenix, they do, they're really strong, like Scottsdale, for example, they do a strong desert aesthetic where in a desert, it would make sense to do a similar kind of planning if that was also incorporated into the design of buildings and the paint colors. I think it would, it would only invite people to develop here.
Are there any thoughts from the gallery? Thank you. Appreciate that. I really do.
Russell Robin again. I think a development standard is a good idea, but it can be taken too far.
Agreed.
I want to give you an example of something that's been taken too far. So in, in the city of Coachella, a lot that's already been zoned for the use, you go to get a building permit, you have to go back through their architecture review and they take it all the way back to SEQA and they make it go through public review for planning commission, back to city council for all that stuff.
Really?
Yes.
Rather than just say it's an overlay, here's the standard you've got to meet.
And they open it all up and anybody can throw at it, just like if it was...
That's crazy.
It's crazy, and it's expensive and it's the farthest, farthest side of the deal you never want to get to. A, no, a plan for building is good. I mean, I'll give you an example, I mean, I actually had my office come to the city of Imperial and request them to look at the building we built out there on Marshall, the Rainbow Building, I call it. Dr. Lou, he loves that building, by the way.
I know he does. And for what he does, I could see why.
He loves, so, but I knew when the colors started going on the building, somebody would be calling my office, so I said, go talk to him first. And you guys don't have a, you have nothing.
Right.
Says you can't, so you really couldn't say no.
Exactly.
So, but we asked.
And, and I appreciate that. And, but this is, but this is the kind of question that, that we want to look at, do we want to have 20 of those?
Russell, I, on that property, and I'm sure when it's all completed, you're going to have landscaping and everything else.
Yeah, it's going to be beautiful.
Yeah, he's got more, he's got more property there he's going to build on, so...
I, I think what you're getting more at is just setting a standard for colors or things.
Yeah.
I agree, that's completely nuts. I mean, yeah.
But don't, don't go the other way.
I'm not going to harass him for it. What he does, the kind of building it is, I totally get it and in his place, I would have done the same thing.
But I just don't want a building Jackie shirt, you know? We can't have that.
Doesn't matter what color shirt Jackie's wearing, I don't want that. Thank you very much.
Sorry Jackie, but we don't need a building that color.
For the record, I like Jackie's shirt.
It's a good color for you.
A recommendation, again, you don't have to go out and create the world.
Right.
Palm Desert has a landscaping program. What grows well there? Many of our folks here plant a tree because it's going to grow fast and five years from now, you're going to have a giant tree that you don't want. Whoever bought, built our house prior to my husband and I moving into it, put 15 trees in the front yard. We have one left because they were all bad trees.
Right.
But if you look at Palm Desert's landscaping standards and borrow from that...
Right.
I didn't use the word plagiarize. And you can get things that grow here and grow in our weather, they're just like we are, their quality of water is somewhat different, but not a lot different. So that would be a recommendation, but standards are good.
Sadly, I think for our soil, we'd have to look at Bonneville to get a better idea of what we grow. But thank you, I appreciate that.
No, but a zilescate like Palm Desert.
Yeah, no, it's a beautiful idea.
Zilescaping with, with different heat tolerant plants.
But heat tolerant desert scape kind of ideas. On the planning side, do you guys have any objections to, looking at a plan like that and maybe tweaking something up like that?
I think some kind of general idea, kind of give way of the eclectic growth the city's had over the last...
Well, I think it reflects where we've come to as a city.
Right.
We aren't the same town we were 20 years ago and I think we want to continue to move forward. It's a way of saying that we're proud of where we are and we want to make it better.
Promote commercial, we don't want to hinder growth. Promote commercial, we don't wanna hinder growth. Of course, your commercial fees obviously would help with promoting commercial growth, so... Commercial pays the bills, right, Mr. Tucker? I mean, business pays the bills.
No doubt.
Housing doesn't pay the bills, business pays the bills.
But if we do that, let's not be like the Sultan Sea, and it's just a lot of talk.
Right.
And a lot of money being spent on studies. Let's, let's make shovel-ready projects.
Hey, I'm trying, Jeff, I'm a Sultan Sea, I try really hard.
Man, you're doing a great job on that, trust me.
I'm, I'm stabbing it right back at the politicians, and you and I discussed that. And that can bog down into, I said that, not you, so if they're seeing it, they can cuss me out. I can really give to crap.
But do that.
It's, it's more of something that Corinne and I both are really passionate about this, and this all goes hand in hand with that. So let's see it to fruition, and let's get this thing done. We've only got a few more, I do, I only have a few more years. Corinne, I hope goes for a long time. I, I just, I'd like to see this done.
I've got, what, 12 months? So, um...
I mean, it's a good idea, as long as it's like I said, easy standard, you know, no primary colors. You know, something that's simple, not, hey, you have to have this shade of brown, you have to have this shade, something that's easy.
I'm envisioning more of a palette, you know, where we describe desert, you know, desertscaping, you give them some samples, something in this family, and then they can play with it from there. But it's not restricting them, but it's, but again, no primary being listed, no neons, no, no Jackeys, you know, et cetera.
Do their color schemes come to the planning commission, like you?
No, again, they would in this case. So for example, if someone wants to go into the downtown village area and build, part of what you're gonna see coming to you is that kind of a requirement. An easy example was when the clock tower facility went up, they were guided in the colors that they could put into that, the same way we did with the Wrigley Blaza. And even on the clock tower, one of the things that came before us at one point in planning was, there was a, for a short while, we had a pawn shop in the clock tower area. And a lot of people never realized it, 'cause one of the things that they weren't allowed to do was put up the three gold balls hanging over their front door, which is traditional in a pawn shop. We, that was something that wasn't permitted in under that zoning overlay. There were restrictions on what they could do, that they had to get things cleared like that. Because we didn't want a certain look to develop, we wanted to maintain something else. So you will see those things coming forward to you if we do this on this corridor. And the other question, you know, and if we extended beyond this corridor, down the Ayton corridor, it would be the same way. Then this seems like it's something we bring back at city council, and with, to give, this isn't something we can give direction on tonight necessarily, but we can give direction on at a future council meeting as we discuss, as a discussion item. So I guess we'd ask for that, so we brought back a discussion at a regular council meeting, it's a discussion action to give direction on. Are there any other comments on this item? All right, real quickly, I'll just go around, any closing comments from anybody on that side of the room? Up here? Any closing comments from anybody back there that'd like to bring forward? Any closing comments from the, from the council?
No, just like to thank everybody for showing up and giving their opinions, 'cause that's what mattered, your opinions.
I also like to thank everyone for coming tonight, I thought it was a very productive conversation. This is all, this is all new for me, so, so it was a lot to absorb, but I'm glad that we were able to talk about it in a way that was rational, and that we're coming up with choices that are going to meet the ends, or, or make sense for both, both entities. I also wanna say I'm really, I'm really excited to have seen this on the agenda, the architectural standards, because I've said before that we're in such a pivotal place as a, as a rapidly growing city, and it's important that we set not only our aesthetic, but our image. We've talked before about signs and trees, and we really have to establish who we want to be, and to make sure that, that people that are coming in, that are developing, are coinciding with that vision.
And then in closing, I'll say that, you know, last night I made a comment at the meeting at the chamber, that I wanted us to stop being a town you drive through, become the town you drive to. And it's meetings like this that are gonna make that possible. The developers, you're doing a great job in helping us build a community we're all proud of, and we appreciate the sacrifice and the hard work and the effort that goes into it. We also appreciate your willingness to communicate with us and work with us and be patient with us, as we, we're a government entity, nothing happens fast. But you've been, but we appreciate you giving us that chance. This has been an extremely productive meeting, and I really do feel like we've garnered a lot of information and knowledge, and I really am proud, I'm proud to have been here on that. So thank you for all that you brought to the table. I wanna officially welcome to our planning commission our three new council members, and thank you for your volunteering efforts, and for stepping up and being a part of where our city's going for the future. That's tremendously important, it takes great minds to, and great hands to build a city like this. And I, again, thank you all very much, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.